Twenty fifth, twenty twenty four. And start this meeting, we'll call it to order here, and the secretary will perform roll call.
Mr. Bills?
Here.
Mr. Foley?
Here.
Mr. Muncie? Ms. Pritchett?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
So I will explain the proceedings of the meeting here. We will have a presentation by the staff for each case. And then we will ask the applicant if they care to add anything else. Then we will ask the commission members if they have any questions of the applicant or staff. And then we'll ask for a motion in a second to open the floor to public comment. And once we, as far as public comments are concerned, we ask each speaker to try to limit their conversation to three minutes. And then if your comment's been made by a previous speaker, please do not duplicate that comment. And we ask you direct your comments to the planning commission and not directly to the applicant. But the applicant will have a chance to respond to comments received at the end. Once the floor's been closed to public comment and no additional comments are made, I'll ask the board if they have any more questions, or the staff, does anything else to add? And then we will, if there's no further discussion, we will ask for a motion in a second to recommend approval, approval with conditions, or disapproval of the applicant's request. All right, so at this time, we'll start, start the meeting here with meeting minutes? Oh, so you plan on adding some public comment here? Okay. First order of business is minutes from the previous meeting. Does anybody have any questions on those minutes? Hearing none, I'll look for a motion.
I move to approve the minutes.
Okay. I'll second.
All right, may I call for the roll?
Mr. Bills?
Abstain.
Mr. Foley?
Approve, yes.
Ms. Pritchett?
Approve.
And Ms. Williams?
Yes.
All right, there's no other, there's no, well, we've got to go to the old business first. Possible revisions to City of Clayton's Planning and Zoning Code relating to recreational adult-use cannabis. Ms. Snyder, do you have a presentation?
Thank you.
All right, can we have a motion to untable this, this topic? Some moved. Do we have a second?
A second.
All right, we have a motion, a second, please call the roll.
Mr. Bills?
Aye.
Mr. Foley?
Aye.
Ms. Pritchett?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
All right.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Adult-use cannabis relating to Clayton codified ordinance. This is Planning Commission Public Hearing and Meeting, November twenty fifth, twenty twenty four. And if you all make a motion this evening to make a recommendation to City Council, that will be heard at the January sixteenth, twenty twenty five council meeting. A lot of this is a recap of what we covered previously, so I'll move through the first half kind of quickly and then slow down once we get to the new information. Feel free to stop me if you need. Ohio legalization of marijuana background. Medical marijuana, May of two thousand sixteen, the Ohio General Assembly approved legislation which legalized marijuana for medical purposes. Ohio's medical marijuana, OMM, law became effective September eighth, twenty sixteen, codified at Ohio Revised Code, ORC three seven nine six. ORC three seven nine six point two nine states the legislative authority of a municipal corporation may adopt an ordinance to prohibit or limit the number of cultivators, processors, or retail dispensaries licensed under this chapter within the municipal corporation. Clayton did not opt to prohibit or limit the number of cultivators, processors, or retail dispensaries licensed under this chapter. City of Clayton and medical marijuana permitted in certain zoning districts. Medical marijuana cultivation, processing, and dispensaries are permitted in CMX, CMI, zoning districts, and medical marijuana processing and dispensaries are permitted in MSD or Main Street forty eight district. Clayton, City of Clayton Medical Marijuana Definitions. Medical marijuana cultivation is defined as a facility that has been issued a certificate of operation by the Ohio Department of Commerce to grow, harvest, package, and transport medical marijuana as permitted under Chapter three seven nine six of the Ohio Revised Code. Medical marijuana dispensary is defined as a building or structure licensed by the State Board of Pharmacy as a medical marijuana retail dispensary. And medical marijuana processing is defined as a facility that has been issued a certificate of operation by the Ohio Department of Commerce to manufacture medical marijuana products. City of Clayton, current medical marijuana cultivators, processors, and dispensaries. Currently, there are no cultivators. Currently, there are no dispensaries. And currently, there is one processor, which is the Main Street Health LLC or MSH. On July fifth, twenty twenty four, they were awarded a provisional dual-use license by the Ohio Division of Cannabis Control, or DCC. They have not yet been awarded a certificate of operation for dual use, which would permit Main Street Health to begin processing adult-use cannabis in addition to the medical cannabis it currently processes. Adult-use cannabis recreational use. Issue two on the November seventh, twenty twenty three ballot legalizing adult-use cannabis in Ohio was approved by fifty-seven percent of voters. In Clayton, three thousand one hundred and seventy-seven votes were cast in favor of legalizing adult-use cannabis, and two thousand three hundred and thirteen votes were cast against the legalization of adult-use cannabis. Adult-use cannabis has been codified at ORC Chapter three seven eight zero. Similar to the medical marijuana statute, the adult-use cannabis statute contains a provision which permits political subdivisions to restrict or prohibit adult-use cannabis within its jurisdictional limits. ORC three seven eight zero point two five, Section A, states the legislative authority of a municipal corporation may adopt on ordinance by a majority vote to prohibit or limit the number of adult-use cannabis operators permitted under this chapter within the municipal corporation. Adult-use cannabis operator is defined as means a level-one use cultivator, a level-two adult-use cultivator, a level-three adult-use cultivator, an adult-use processor, and an adult-use dispensary. Tax Information. Ohio imposes a special ten percent tax on the sale of adult-use cannabis, plus the fixed state sales tax of five point seven five percent, and local variable sales tax percentages. The adult-use cannabis statute is silent with respect to the allocation of revenue from the five point seven five percent tax and the local sales tax, but the statute provides that all funds collected from the special ten percent tax will be deposited into the adult-use tax fund. Monies will be distributed from that fund on a quarterly basis. Ten percent special tax allocations. Thirty-six percent goes to the Cannabis Social Equity and Jobs Fund. Thirty-six percent goes to the Host Community Fund to be used for benefit of municipal corporations and townships for any approved purpose. Distributions from this fund shall be based on the percentage of adult-use tax which is attributable to each municipal corporation or township, and there's more information on the next couple of slides. Twenty-five percent to the Substance Abuse and Addiction Fund to help alleviate substance abuse, and three percent to the Division of Cannabis Control and Tax Commissioner Fund to support the operation of the DCC and to defray costs of the Department of Taxation related to administration of the adult-use cannabis tax. ORC three seven eight zero point two three, Section C, Section Two, unless otherwise authorized under this chapter or rule, the director or budget of and management shall transfer amounts to each fund as follows: to thirty-six percent to the Host Community Cannabis Fund for the benefit of the municipal corporation or townships that have adult-use dispensaries, and the municipal corporations or townships may use such funds for any approved purpose. Distributions to the municipal corporations or townships shall be based on the percentage of adult-use tax attributable to each municipal corporation or township. And then an example of that ten percent special tax allocation is a city with five dispensaries, and those five dispensaries generate sales totaling ten million dollars. That ten million dollars times ten percent is one million dollars. One million dollars times that thirty-six percent is three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and so the city would receive that three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Ohio Adult Use Cannabis Sales. Adult-use cannabis sales began in Ohio on August sixth, twenty twenty four. As of September twenty first, twenty twenty four, adult-use cannabis sales exceeded seventy-six million dollars. As of September thirtieth, twenty twenty four, there are a hundred and twenty-four dual-use dispensaries in Ohio that can sell medical and adult-use cannabis. Columbus has thirteen, Cincinnati has ten, Dayton has six, and Cleveland has five. As of September thirtieth, twenty twenty four, there are over one hundred local cities and townships with moratoriums to prohibit adult-use cannabis. Clayton Moratorium. The City of Clayton adopted Resolution Number R twelve twenty-three seventy-two on December eighteenth, twenty twenty three, and Resolution R five twenty-four thirty-one on May sixteenth, twenty twenty four, enacting a moratorium on adult-use cannabis so that further research and analysis could occur. On September fifth, twenty twenty four, the City Council adopted Resolution Number R nine twenty-four forty-eight, extending the moratorium until September fifth, twenty twenty five, such that the issue of adult-use cannabis in Clayton could be submitted to the Clayton Planning Commission for recommendation to council. Per CCO one one four one point zero three, the Planning Commission is tasked with review of proposed amendments to the zoning code, text and/or map, and make recommendations to, to council. Inglewood's Adult Use Cannabis. On September twenty fourth, twenty twenty four, the City of Inglewood enacted Ordinance Number two four dash one one, limiting the number of adult-use cannabis operators with its, within its jurisdictional limits to no more than one. Specific language was an ordinance limiting the number of adult-use cannabis operators within the city limits to no more than one adult-use cannabis dispensaries. And then instead of reading all the texts to you guys, this is just a copy of their ordinance, and just pointing out in red there at the top that this is the section that limits it to one, and then a little bit further down, that other red box is where they, again, pointed out that no restricted use can happen within five hundred feet of an adult-use cannabis facility. Alternatives. Alternative one was to prohibit adult-use cannabis operators within all zoning districts of the city, noting that even if operators are prohibited, individuals are still permitted to home-grow for personal use, which would mean six plants per person, per residence, where two adult users reside with a cap of twelve, and that is ORC three seven eight zero point two nine. Staff interpreted this alternative to have no interest from the Planning Commission. Alternative two was to allow adult-use cannabis in the same zoning districts in which medical marijuana is currently allowed. Staff interprets this alternative to include adding permitted or conditional designation uses to non-residential districts in that use summary table, adding permitted or conditional designation uses to commercial mixed-use districts specifically, to CMI use district specifically, and MSD district specifically, adding parking standards and definitions to the glossary of terms, and then possibly adding facility or use standards that were specific to adult-use cannabis in the generally applicable regulations sections. Alternative three is similar with allowing adult-use cannabis in the same zoning districts as medical marijuana is currently allowed, but limiting the number of permitted facilities, and this was the same interpretation from staff. So CCO one 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 point zero seven is the non-residential districts, the use summary table. This is where staff is recommending to add adult-use cannabis dispensary as a permitted or conditional use into this table in both of the retail section and, I believe it's industrial section. So the adult-use cannabis dispensary would be in retail, and then adult-use cannabis cultivation and processing would be conditional or permitted uses in industrial areas of the non-residential district use summary table. In CCO one 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 point one three point D point one, which is the CMX or Commercial Mixed Use District Use Table, this would also be added as a conditional or permitted use for adult-use cannabis, again, retail, or adult-use cannabis cultivation and processing in industrial. And then in the CMI district, adding adult-use cannabis dispensary as retail, adult-use cannabis cultivation and processing under industrial. And then Main Street forty-eight district, adult-use cannabis dispensary in retail, and then only adult-use cannabis processing in industrial. In the parking space count table, it's recommended to add adult-use cannabis dispensary as one per four hundred square feet for the retail section, and adult-use cannabis cultivation and processing as one per employee on the largest shift in the industrial section. And then the glossary of terms for uses, adding some definitions here as well. So adult-use cannabis cultivation, a facility that has been issued a certificate of operation by the Ohio Department of Commerce to grow, harvest, package, and transport adult-use cannabis as permitted under, and then probably Chapter, I think it's three seven eight zero for the Ohio Revised Code, would probably be appropriate for this definition here. Adult-use cannabis dispensary, a building or structure licensed by the State Board of Pharmacy as a medical retail dispensary, that's the definition for adult medical use. So we probably need some different language for adult-use cannabis dispensary. And then adult-use cannabis processing, a facility that has been issued a certificate of operation by the Ohio Department of Commerce to manufacture adult-use cannabis products. This one may or may not be appropriate since the Ohio Department of Commerce would also cover adult-use cannabis as well. But those are the definitions for Ohio medical marijuana. And then the generally applicable regulations, this would be adding a section here that would be adult-use cannabis standards applicable anywhere permitted, just like it is with halfway house standards and short-term rental standards. So following the short-term, the short-term rental standards in the code, I propose some of this language to you guys ahead of time. It's a little small to read here, but there were just a couple of sections that probably needed revision. And then also for halfway house standards, there was a few more standards here and a little bit further revision that would likely be needed.
Did I read in the other material we received prior to the meeting that these would be conditional uses?
Yeah, they could be. So short-term rentals are conditionally permitted in certain zoning districts, and then right now, medical marijuana is not conditionally permitted, it's just outright permitted in certain zoning districts, and there are no special provisions like there are with halfway house standards or short-term rental standards.
Is, is the Main Street Health an industrial classification, or are you proposing this is for adult cannabis?
Adult-use cannabis would be the recreational facet of that, and the Main Street Health one is in the MSD district where processing is permitted for medical marijuana.
They do? They have a dual license?
I didn't think that they did as of September.
Yeah, the last I saw, they were in the process of getting that. I don't think they've actually, I think they got a provisional license. I think they're still in the process of getting the actual certificate of operation, but I know they do have a provisional license. So they'll more than likely be able to get that however long it takes to process at, at state level. They probably will end up getting the dual license eventually.
So could we end up with processing, a growing, and a dispensary all in the city?
It could be unless there is a limit to what, how many there could be. If you go with the short-term rental standards or halfway house standards as sort of a guide, you can limit them within there, or the city can impose a moratorium to limit those sort of things, sort of like Inglewood did.
So there's a current moratorium in Clayton for adult-use cannabis?
Yes.
And who, who put that in place? Was that City Council?
Yes.
We didn't have a hand in that, did we?
No, you did not.
The September twenty twenty five, right?
Yes.
And you said that one of your, one of these items was recommended by staff? Can you go over that?
For...
I forget.
I just put together recommendations of where to add things, and so the non-residential district use summary table, this is where you can add adult-use cannabis as a permitted or conditional use. Right now, medical marijuana, all three of them are not, they're not conditional, they're all just outright permitted in those three zoning districts. And so you could outright permit them in all three of those zoning districts and then have special standards applied to it, or not have special standards applied to it. And if there's no special standards applied to it, they would default to the Ohio rules and regulations.
And by the way, Ellen, those regulations are near school, and they're, they're spelled out, right? Because I think we talked about that at the last meeting, right, what those were, so...
Yeah, so there's like restricted uses within five hundred feet. Inglewood duplicated this in their ordinance, so they're just making sure that maybe if the Ohio Revised Code changes or something, that that stayed in place for the City of Inglewood, is why I theorize maybe they did that, but I don't know for sure.
Yeah, there was a, the, the map that you, well, the link to the map was pretty useful to determine that, and I noticed that there were not a lot in Clayton. Yeah, so be, and like Sabrina said, an opportunity for more in the area.
Right.
I mean, I go away. When you put the numbers up on the screen about how many existed in Columbus, Cincinnati, I, I forget, in Dayton, I looked at that map, those numbers seemed like they were countywide to me. Do, do you know that? Like, like, did, did you, did you, when you put the Dayton number up? Like, when I looked at the map, like, today, I thought that there were three in the City of Dayton, there were like two in the City of Riverside. When I counted the little dots, and I thought there was like seven or eight countywide. Am I wrong, do you think?
It could be dual licenses, but I did not pull those numbers.
Okay.
Those came from Martina back in when we had our first Planning Commission.
Those might be countywide, that was, that was pulled up. They may be talking about the area rather than the city proper. So. But, I mean, just from looking at, and, you know, obviously it's your decision what you wanted to do, and I sent you some additional information, but looking at the ORC and the OAC, and the OAC are the rules that so far have been adopted by the DCC to date, it is heavily regulated. I'll give them that much because there are, as you saw, very specific regulations about you can't be within five hundred feet of a school, a public library, a church, a park, et cetera. You can't have the dispensaries within one mile of each other. Once you're up and operating, there are very specific surveillance video that they have to keep and retain and provide. Once you are, before you can enter the dispensary, you have to show ID that you're twenty-one. Before you check out, you have to show that ID again that you're, prove that you're over twenty-one years old. You have to be accompanied by an employee. The employees are trained and have to be badged and et cetera. So it is heavily regulated. I, I, again, I will say, it, it, that's very impressive the way they have done that. But again, the, they did adopt it such that each community could outright ban it if they want, allow it if they want, restrict it. As you saw with Inglewood, they've restricted it to just one adult-use cannabis dispensary. Now, what the DCC says is that every two years, they're going to go back and review and see if they're going to allow more licenses, because if I remember correctly, they allowed, I believe, maybe fifty dispensary licenses or so, if I remember correctly. And then they'll go back and see what the demand is in twenty twenty six, and at that point in time, I would probably say they'll, my guess would be, and it's just an educated guess, they're going to allow more dispensaries, because I provided you with the sales numbers just from August. I mean, it's unbelievable, the sales numbers, it's huge. So I can imagine they're not going to in twenty twenty six allow more dispensaries to operate. I think probably your path forward is to determine, number one, it, it sounds like you've already determined, maybe you're leaning towards allowing it. I don't think you want to outright prohibit it from what I saw at the last meeting anyway. So if you allow it, then I think you have to decide, okay, we're going to allow it, we're going to allow it in the same districts as medical marijuana is currently allowed, which to me would make sense, or we're going to allow it also in these districts. And then do you want it permitted or conditional? And then do you want to restrict the number? So I think those are probably the primary considerations that you want to give. And then from my perspective, you just have to make a recommendation to council. I don't think it's necessary unless you want to, to recommend specific zoning code language changes. I know Ellen did a good job of, you know, parsing through the zoning code and saying these are probably where the, the zoning code revisions need to be. Perhaps maybe you could just give, and like I said, if you give me direction, I could draft it up, bring it back to you at a future meeting, saying these are the recommendations we want to make to council. Yes, okay, go ahead, give this written recommendation to council. And then they could craft the language, because as you know, they can either adopt your recommendations wholesale, they can revise them, they can reject them wholesale, that's up to them. But I would think probably that's your best way forward at this point, is to give them a written guidelines, which we could then bring back, because my goal in setting the moratorium for September twenty twenty five was to look through this, take our time, give ourselves plenty of time to review it, so we weren't rushed, so that we can then look at these things and make some well-thought-out recommendations. So that's my two cents on the matter.
So with the moratorium ending in September twenty twenty five, if we get this work completed prior to that, would it still stay enforced until twenty five, and then whatever recommendations happen after that date, or could it end it?
They can extend it if they want. If you get recommendations to them before twenty twenty five, and they decide one way or another, this is how we want to revise the zoning code, and let's say they revise the zoning code in July of twenty twenty five. What I would do is I would draft up the legislation to reflect that as of this date, these revisions to the zoning code go in effect, and the moratorium ceases, so that they coincide.
And, Mr. Chair, I, I did, I wanted to thank Martina, because I remember one of the things I, I, you know, I think we all were on that communication, we're like, okay, what is the revenue to the city? And I think it's probably hard to understand right now, right? I mean, it's, in fact, I had the chance to talk to some other city folks around the county, and everybody's in the same boat, they're just not sure yet, right? So.
The example that I gave up there in the presentation of the ten percent and the five dispensaries with ten million dollars in sales in one year, that's actually the example that I spoke to one of the DCC attorneys, and he was explaining, because I, I was reading through this code, and it's like, I cannot figure out how they're going to, you know, do this. So he gave me that example, which was very easy for me to understand. So, I mean, long story short, I think what you take away from that is obviously the more dispensaries you have, probably the greater number of sales you're going to have, the greater number of money that's going to come back to the city. Because I know from looking at your meeting on October twenty eighth, you were talking about, well, if we were going to restrict it by number, one seems a little too less, five seems a little too much, so is there somewhere in between one and five that we could do? So, I mean, you know, from that, plus the numbers I gave you with respect to how much those sales have increased in just the past two or three months, it's hard to calculate what that number might be, except to say that the more dispensaries you have, probably the greater number of sales, the greater number of money that's going to come back to the city from that ten percent. So.
So is ten million dollars actually a, where did that number come from? And is that, is that like a good example?
That was a pulled out, that was a pulled out of the blue number. That was not based upon any statistics or anything. That was just like a, for instance. If these five dispensaries located within your city had ten million dollars of sales, this is what you could see back to the city as a result of sales.
Wondering how realistic that ten million dollars would be. I mean, that, it could be extremely high, but looking at the, the growth...
The growth is big, I, but I wouldn't put too much weight in that ten million dollar figure, because it was just pulled out of the air as an example. So.
Gotcha. I did have a... So the Cannabis Social Equity and Jobs Fund, do we have any idea what that money would be used for? Is that for grants to start a business, or is it for what?
It could be. I haven't done research on what exactly that fund is for, but my belief is that it is from probably the state level, and so that money would be allocated from a state, you know, group or community or fund to individuals who apply for it.
Apply for the license?
Not for a license, probably just apply for those funds. There's probably regulations on them dispersing those funds, and so they would likely disperse them from the state level down to people who apply for them. And it could be for new uses, it could be for people who exist, and I just haven't researched exactly what that fund is or how they disperse their funds.
Yeah, that would be interesting to see how those would be used. And the ten percent... APP apostrophe D, what was I meaning? The ten percent tax... Approved purpose, that's it, thank you. Can you elaborate on that?
That's another conversation I have with the DCC. That's another conversation I have with the DCC person I was talking about, because, again, when I read that language in the Ohio revised code, my thinking was an approved purpose by the state. And when he said, "Our interpretation, DCC, is that any approved purpose means any purpose that has been approved by the city." So as long as the city has approved the purpose, you can use the money, the 10% that comes back to the city, for that approved purpose. Now, he did say the legislature could change that language in the ORC at some point in time, so that could be revised. But as of now, the way it stands, the interpretation is, as long as the approved purpose is approved by the city, you can use it for that.
Okay, so that would be done by the council?
Yes.
So on the example of six houseplants per, is that per adult in the house? Because the example was just two, but if there's, you know, more than two adults in a, in a property, is it, is it capped at 12 still? Okay.
And that, anything you do with this would not affect the home grow. Because we're just talking about dispensaries, cultivators, and processors. So even if hypothetically speaking, you were to say, no, we're not going to allow any adult-use cannabis operators within the city, people could still home grow according to this with, with the caps. You're also allowed to transfer your plants, if you home grow them, to another individual over 21 years old, as long as you don't sell them. So.
Transfer within the same household?
No, transfer to, like, gift it to somebody. As long as they're 21 years old and you don't sell it.
Okay, and then.
I don't know who's going to police that, but there you go.
Enforcement, how is this enforcement going? So, as far as the transporting, that's just within the city district? Or is that transporting countywide? I mean, or is, or, or is that when you purchase it, you're allowed to transport it to your home? Is that what transport actually means?
Your transport for that purpose is just if you home grow six plants, I can now transfer them to my friend who is over 21 years of age or older?
No, I'm not talking about that. Just in general, is talking about transporting.
Probably from a grower to a processor, then from a processor to a dispensary.
So it's just basically.
Using the word "transport."
Would be regulated in the ORC by the state, as to who, how, those regulations. So, that, from my perspective, that would not be something the city would regulate, because the state's regulating that.
Okay, and then my last question, I think. Let's see. Oh, as far as Inglewood's regulations here, their ordinance, it just talks about dispensary. Have they discussed the processing and the cultivation at all? Because this is only more, not more than one dispensary.
Not that I'm aware of. They're specifically limiting just the dispensary aspect of the adult-use cannabis, and then also reiterating the 500 feet from a restricted use.
Well, they may have more ordinances to come.
They could. I don't know if they have a moratorium in place for other adult-use cannabis uses. So they could have a moratorium in place for dispensaries or cultivators or processors for adult-use cannabis, that I'm not aware of.
I haven't talked to anybody in Inglewood, but the way I'm reading this, in Section 1, it says, "The city will limit the number of adult-use cannabis operators within the city limits to no more than one adult-use cannabis dispensaries." So that tells me they, and again, I could be wrong, I'd have to talk to them to see. But that tells me they're only going to allow one adult-use dispensary and nothing else. Because if you look at the ORC, the definition of adult-use cannabis operators includes cultivators, processors, and dispensaries. So the way I read this is they're only allowing one adult-use cannabis dispensary at this point in time. No cultivators or operators. But, I mean, they could, of course, you know, adopt other legislation to revise this, but that, that's how I would interpret it.
I guess I read that it was, they're going to limit the number of dispensaries. They're kind of silent on the processors and growers.
Yeah, the, the curious thing is, it says, "The, the city will limit the number of, quote, 'adult-use cannabis operators' within the city to no more than one adult-use dispensary." And so adult-use cannabis operators defined in the ORC includes cultivators, processors, and dispensaries. So, I mean, I could see how you can interpret it both ways, just knowing that that's how the ORC defines it. That's why I'm interpreting it that way, but they may be interpreting it some other way.
All right, I'm trying to find the slide where it defines that. I'm not able to locate it, but yeah, it was defined as all three of them for adult use.
So I wonder if that, if they're not going to limit the cultivators and the processors and just maybe sell it out of that one dispensary?
Yeah, I'm not sure, looking at this, what they're exact, we probably have to follow up with them to see what their intent was. I know how I'm interpreting it, but again, I can see where you could interpret a couple different ways there.
Martina, I have a question, and I, one of the things that I struggled with between last month and this month really was how little I knew about, about this issue of number one in general. So I did, like, really, I'm glad we had a bit of time just to kind of do some research and, and share information. But the one thing I struggled with was the number, like you said, and I, and I just want to, and I don't, and it's funny, Ellen, because when I did look at that state map, I real, I, I mean, I, I think I read this right. If you counted that dispensary, the dispensary map in Montgomery County, I think it, I know there's two in Riverside, and I think there's three in Dayton. At least there's three little bubbles in the city of Dayton, and there's two bubbles in Riverside, and then, gosh, I think, anyway. I mean, I, people shouldn't take me, take this for, for, for gospel, because I, maybe I read it wrong. But I was just going to ask this question, Martina, at the last meeting, Ms. Pritchett, you know, kind of made the point, you know, that it seemed a little exclusionary if we just did one, right? And I think there's some wisdom in that. I, I'm struggling with, I'm struggling with the number, but I wonder if we did, I'm just going to throw this out. And I don't know that I want to make it a motion yet until it comes out of my mouth, okay? So I reserve the right to pull it back. But if we wanted to do more than one, and we said, okay, it's 2024, we want to start with two. If there's demand, could we add more in two years? Meaning, meaning, would that mean we wouldn't be under such pressure to figure out the exact number today? But given, given the sentiment, you know, that I think is smart, could we, I'm just throwing that out there.
You're talking about dispensaries?
Dispensaries, yeah, yeah.
Just dispensaries?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, but then, yeah, but I have another question, but go first.
So you can make a recommendation to council, okay? We recommend, at this point in time, you revise the zoning code to allow no more than two dispensaries. Okay, and let's say council gets that, and they can say, okay, we agree with that. And then, a year or two down the line or whatever, they could say, well, that's gone well, we'd like to add a few more. So let's throw this back to the planning commission to make another recommendation, have them look at it, and see if they want to recommend that we add to this or not. I think that's probably the path that would take. Now, you could recommend two to council, and they say, no. Or they could say, we're going to do four, or we're going to do five, or, you know. So yes, you can recommend it, but it's still within their authority to say, we're going to go with it or we're not, or we're going to revise it. But to answer your, I guess to answer your question generally, could it be amended in the future to add more? Yes.
So it's easier to add than take away?
Right.
Okay, and then the second, to the question about the processors, am, am I correct, we, we have one here, right? We have a processor, and I, I mean, my personal, I'd like to help them continue to, to do business. Could we, do we also have to put a, do we have to put a number on that as well, on the processor?
They would be included in that. If you only allow one, they would be included in that one count.
Well, unless, unless they restricted it to just two dispensaries. Because they could say, we want two dispensaries, we want two cultivators, and we want three processors. I'm just throwing numbers out there. I think that is a possibility. Or you could just lump it all together and say, we want no more than five adult-use operators. Operators, meaning you could have four dispensaries, one cultivator. You're limiting the cultivators, processors, and dispensaries to a total number of five. Or I think you could do it individually and say, this number of processors, this number of cultivators, this number of dispensaries. Or you could just give a general recommendation to council and say, we agree you should allow adult-use cannabis operators, you figure out the numbers. And here are the zoning districts we think they should be in. That's an option, too. So, again, there's nothing in the code that says how general or how specific you want to be. That's up to you as a body. So I'm just throwing out some options for you to consider. That's your decision to make.
They would probably want to dismantle us if we did something like that.
And I'll be quiet right after this last question, but in terms of the, well, probably not, in terms of the one, the one processor that's here. Same thing could happen with that. If another processor came to, to the planning commission and requested approval, we could deal with that, that, we could, right? Or, or, right? Everything, I guess my.
If it was conditional, or if, if it was conditional, they would have to come to the, to the BZA, right?
Yeah, yes.
To the BZA. If it was permitted, they could just go ahead and do it, unless there were special restrictions placed on the permitted ones, right?
Right.
Glad that you clarified that, because I had a question about, about that. Thank you.
Yes, any conditional use that is defined in our use tables, they all come before the BZA. And then the BZA has a list of conditions that they, you know, weigh the options for. And then, in the instance, like a halfway house, they have their own special findings of fact list, that they also have to weigh the benefits, benefits for, for each facility.
Think of giving us something to work with. I'm going to make a motion that we approve to the city council two dispensaries and the existing processor.
Well, the existing processor wouldn't need any kind of recommendation, because he's going to get his approval from the state. So he's already got his provisional license for adult-use processing from the state. He's just working his way through the state process. So you have no ability to thwart him, let's say, because he's a 10B. And the way, again, I hate to keep referring, because I've talked to this attorney at DCC a few times, because it is so confusing. But the way he explained the 10B process to me is that the reason they decided to give the 10B license, which is basically somebody who already has the medical license for marijuana. They decided to go ahead and give them a 10B process to let them go through that process for adult use, because they had already invested the capital. Spent the time and the money in getting the medical marijuana license, so they felt it was just to go ahead, since they had invested the capital. And give them a process to get a 10B, which was basically the dual license for the medical and the adult use combined. So really, you don't have to do anything with respect to the, the 10Bs. That's sort of a side issue. This, the way I look at this is new adult-use dispensaries, cultivators, and processors that are not 10B license holders. Because those are going to be processed through the state process.
So is, yes, is MSH a cultivator, processor, and dispensary?
No, they're currently just a medical marijuana processor.
I just put that information in there so you would know how many medical facilities, how many medical cultivators, dispensaries, and processors were already in the city. In case that was information you needed to know or wanted to know with respect to adult-use cannabis, when you were looking at that.
So they are just a processor?
They're a processor. So once they get their 10B approval from the state, which, final 10B approval, which I'm sure they will. Then they'll start processing marijuana, not only for medical uses, but for adult-use recreational.
Where do you see, if you can project their processing, it seems like they would also want to dispense? Or is that just?
They haven't approached the city with any applications or interest in doing a dispensary. I think right now they are trying to figure out their licensing with the state to see if it's even possible. But they have been and are successful with medical processing at this point.
They've been in business since?
I believe it was 2019.
Okay, I was going to say, because I know the medical came about in 2018. So they've been in business for about five years, right?
Question, and I'm not quite sure how to pose the question, so let me kind of get through it. If we're looking at alternative two or three, and I want to go from retail to industrial. So we have a processor and cultivators. If they're at the industrial level, are they able to then have business-to-business sales outside of Clayton, outside of Ohio?
You're talking about processing and cultivating?
Yes.
I don't believe they can sell outside of Ohio.
Okay.
I believe they can sell outside of Clayton. I'd have to double-check that, but I believe not outside the state.
Okay.
Yeah, I haven't, haven't seen that particularly.
So I know we're, we're talking a lot about retail, but when you start looking at opportunity and looking at industrial, and looking at B-to-B sales, it seems that that is a greater opportunity. Especially since we know these other areas are growing, we're expecting them to grow. So I, I don't want us to be shortsighted in looking at that opportunity, that side of the business.
Yeah, I mean, the cultivators and, I don't know how many, do you know how many employees that processor has?
Main Street Health, I believe they have less than seven.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Because from my perspective, with the cultivators and the processors, and, correct me if I'm wrong, Ellen. The money that's going to come back to the city for the cultivators and the processors would be the income tax of the employees, correct?
Yes, they would do income tax, then there's that special allocation tax.
Right, and then with dispensaries, that's where you're going to get the 10% tax.
The greater opportunity for money. Okay, that's good to know.
But Sabrina, to your point, like, would it be more enticing for somebody to be able to do all three? Is that what you're trying, I mean, is that?
Yes, I mean, I'm, I'm just wondering if maybe we're looking, instead of saying, and having a number on dispensaries. Maybe we have a number on operators? And then allow city council to then identify what those numbers are in each of those categories?
Cultivators, dispensaries.
Yes, and processors.
That makes, that makes sense to me, because then we would have to.
So you're saying, rather than recommending to council two dispensaries, one processor, one cultivator, give them a number like six operators, which encompasses all three terms. And have them decide what number they figure, if any, between the categories?
Yes.
You would, would you make a recommendation also, I, it sounds like, I don't know, I don't want to put words in your mouth, that you want to, you want it to be allowed. I'm, I'm not sure if you are leaning towards you want it to be outright permitted or permitted with special conditions or conditional. So that it then goes to the BZA if somebody makes an application?
When, when I look at what is written in state law, it is so specific. And I know we had gotten into the conversation at our last meeting about, in terms of proximity to schools, to churches. And I don't think we need to get into that conversation, because that's already been addressed.
Yeah, so, I mean, what you could say is that, what you could recommend to council is that if they decide to allow processors, cultivators, dispensaries at whatever number you recommend, if any, within the city of Clayton, then it'd also be recommended that, of course, they be subject to the provisions of the ORC and the OAC that governs the licensing and the operation of those facilities, and any amendments there, too. So that if the, the law is revised at some point in time, then they're subject to the amended law, which they're subject to anyway, but I would spell it out in there, just to make it clear. Going to get a license without going through that process, so.
Except because I'm not, you know, I just had that, so I'm not sure if they would need to be copied or written from, using councils if they do.
No, I mean, you don't have to make a recommendation to city council for special provisions. Those are just. Those are just some of the options that you guys have here. If you want to conditionally permit something, it may be of interest to you to put some special provisions in there. But if you just want to lean on the Ohio guidelines, then you don't need any sort of special provisions. And then City Council can also go back and ask for those or, you know, make those changes with your recommendation as well.
I think from my perspective, sorry, not to interrupt you. And then, Ellen, if you want to add anything. I think I said earlier, from my perspective, I think your important recommendations are, do you want to permit it or not? And it sounds like you do. And then, do you want it, do you think it should be outright permitted or conditional? Do you think there should be a limit on the number? I think those, to me, sound like the three basic. And then, from that point, if you want to add anything specific for council to consider, then you can add it in.
That was, that was what I was gathering. When I, when I think about this, I guess, I don't, I'm leaning that we do not have to have provisions that, because the law is so specific and that takes care of itself. And that we look to say, this is our baseline that we want to start. And I like the idea of operators versus being specific with the number in each category. I just don't know that I know enough in terms of identifying specifically cultivators, processors, and dispensaries. It's my thought. Generally, I think it's an opportunity for Clayton. And I would just hate for us to be short-sighted on that opportunity.
I got two thoughts. One, I see it as a conditional use. Gives you another opportunity to see it again in front of zoning?
Yeah, I would go before the Board of Zoning Appeals. And they are the deciding board there, so it wouldn't move past them onto council or anything like that.
And then, secondly, on the, on the numbers, I think I understand your intent to allow for opportunities. And if you said three operators, that could end up being three dispensaries. Is that possibly what you want? Or are you interested in limiting that?
Well, when I thought about operators, then I was thinking that that would then be inclusive of all three categories.
Yeah, but it's a matter of who gets there first. I mean, you could have more than one dispensary. And if, if that's okay, then fine. But that's kind of the possibility that you're opening it up to right now.
Martina, if we were to say at this body, three operators, then would it be, at that point, the council would need to decide the categories within those three operators? Or is it possible that they would not make that decision either?
It's possible they couldn't make that decision either. And then it would probably go to who's first to get their applica- because you're going to process those in the order they come in, right? So, let's say, we recommend and council hypothetically says, okay, we're going to allow six adult-use cannabis operators. And you have all dispensaries submit applications, and you wind up with six dispensaries and no cultivators, no processors. That's, I could see that as a possibility.
Okay.
So, can we have a category, just throwing out a number, not saying this is the number, say that we have no more than five operators with the maximum of three dispensaries?
Yeah, you could make that recommendation to council. And then, again, they would decide, yeah, we want to go with that, or we don't, or whatever they want to do with that.
Okay, okay.
Operators, and then maybe conditional for the zoning.
You could, yeah, you could add some special provisions in there for conditional uses, like short-term rentals or halfway house standards, or not have those general provisions in there. And then the BZA would go through their findings of fact for conditional uses. They have like a set of 17 things that they go through, and they benefit the pros and cons for the community and things like that.
But pardon, see, now I hear myself. I'm getting ready to say, I'm hearing Sabrina's loud and clear. With mine, it sounds like there's nothing. But, but the zoning would not necessarily make a cap on the type.
Correct. Unless there was a provision within the Clayton Codified Ordinance to specify the type, because Ohio doesn't specify the type, they would just go through their findings of fact for conditional uses, and they wouldn't pull in any sort of special provisions for medical marijuana or adult-use cannabis.
So, that would not resolve the problem that your thing could occur if we didn't put any, okay, I was just trying to think it through.
I don't know if it's a problem or an opportunity, so I just-
I was getting ready to ask, what is the concern? Maybe that's the question.
Oh, he was just saying that.
No, just for the entire body.
Oh.
For us to make a final decision.
I'm just, and that's all?
Yeah, no, and I don't know that it's a concern either, but it's a great question. I think, I'll give you my sense. I mean, I think your point last meeting was a fair, really good point, that one seems like it's kind of limiting and it's, you know, it, that made sense to me. I don't, when I think of more than one in 2024, I kind of, for some reason, I landed on the number two. I could probably go as high as three. I mean, because at the end of the day, the council's going to decide. And I'm talking about dispensaries. And I think, I think from the community's standpoint, their biggest, the biggest point of discussion might be the dispensary because it's the most public-facing part of this, right? I mean, the processors are probably like a manufacturing business. I mean, there's, right? I mean, that's, and they pay income taxes. And also, the biggest bang for the buck for the city is going to be the, I think, the, the dispensary tax. So, in my mind, that one kind of, kind of hovers higher. And then, I don't, I don't understand the business either, frankly. I've never done it, but I've never even been inside the one on Main. But my, it's either two or three to me. And I, and part of me thinks, Sabrina, too, about that, is that if you look at the city of Dayton, they've got 130,000 people. And I think I'm right, they have three. City of Riverside has about 20-some thousand people, they have two. Now, the city of Riverside had two medical marijuana facilities, and they, when the law changed, they're going to allow them to go to the recreational. And so, I was also kind of banking our population against those other cities. And I know that I'm right, but in my mind, I was, you know, I thought, we have, what, 12,000? How many?
Yes.
12,000 something? And so, that number two was the first one that came to mind because it was, to your point last month, it was higher than one. It felt a little bit far. But then I thought, then that's why I asked that question, like, could we, a month from now or two months from now, say, yeah, we were wrong. We need one more. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. And I would say, if, if we, so it was out there, if we said, whatever the, you know, whatever everybody else thinks, whatever the number is, I, my sense is, I think it would be not bad to give a number around the dispensaries and then maybe provide a flexibility, to your point, around the other things because I guess we don't know who else is going to be showing up for what, but, so.
And I, I think I would agree with that because, to me, the cultivators and the processors, that's a business-to-business, and then from the processors to the dispensaries, a business-to-business. But once you got the dispensaries, it's everybody. It's the general public. So, it sounds like we're getting close to possibly coming up with the, and I only, he raised his hand once. He did, you got to, you have to swear in and then come up here and make, actually-
We need a public hearing.
Yeah, right. So, give us a second here. Can I have a motion to open this to public session?
Yes. My most, first motion, what? I moved to motion.
We have a motion for, open up the public session. Is there a second?
Second, yep.
All right, please call the roll.
Mr. Bills?
Aye.
Mr. Foley?
Aye.
Ms. Pritchett?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
So, do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give to this commission is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Come on up and state your name and address.
Name is Michael Podrosky. Address is 11155 Old Mill Road. And two questions, I think, two questions. One, has anybody done any research on the negative impact, if there is any, of having a dispensary or a processing plant or anything like that within the city limits? And then, my other question is, is the intent to satisfy the immediate demand of the locale of the city or then, then satisfy the exterior of the city with dispensaries or processing plants or whatnot? Mr. Foley, you had a good question about, well, we have 12,000 people. How many do we really need to suffice that? Is the intent, then, to grow that, to have other people coming in from outside the city limits and bringing other people in here to do their business and then leave? Or what, what would be the intent of the long-term goal versus a short-term goal? That's, I guess, two questions.
So, as far as the research, I can say, I was actually at, for the city of Moraine, and they had a Planning Commission public hearing on this last week that I was at. So, and their chief of police did provide them some statistics and some information, and I can get that and provide it to you. And this was public meetings, so. Basically, I don't remember the exact figures, but he did indicate, from the information he was looking at, not in Ohio, because we don't have those statistics yet, but in from the, from some of the other states that do allow recreational marijuana, there was a certain percentage of increase in overdoses, in child accidental ingestion and things like that, which then also contributed to increase in calls for police and fire services. So, I can get you the information. I don't have the exact figures, and I don't want to misquote it, but he did indicate, there were some studies done where those numbers did increase when the recreational marijuana was allowed.
Anything else?
Yeah, that's just the second question of the intent is, I guess my fear would be if we get too big and then that causes some adverse, negative impacts that obviously nobody can foresee the future. And because I have two small children and so on, and I like to make sure that the area still stays safe and still stays, so. But I'm not against it. I just want to, as probably all you want to be prepared as best as you can with the information you're given. So, that was it, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like his point about, are we trying to, based on population, are we trying to take care of the needs of Clayton? Or getting more dispensaries, you're inevitably going to be attracting lots of other people from outside of Clayton. Whether that's good or bad, I guess, remains to be seen. But I think it's something to take into account. All right, a move, we, well, have a motion to move, to close public input?
That we close the floor to public comment.
Oh, wait a second.
All right. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bills? Mr. Foley? Ms. Pritchett?
Aye.
And Ms. Williams?
Aye.
And I will also reach out to Chief Hamlin and see if he has any statistical information on if there's an increase in, you know, calls to the police and fire. See if he has any of that information as well, that I can then forward on.
I'll make you, maybe make one comment, just a personal observation on this. I, I remember when the community was making a decision about whether we were going to allow the, the Resino to come in, you know, over on Needmore Road. I remember thinking, and I was, and I was a county commissioner then, and I remember thinking, because there was some pushback against that. Just, you know, people worried, you know, would people lose their livelihood? You know, that kind of thing. And I remember thinking, I remember thinking, you don't really, we'd be wrong to build our economy around that, right? And here, I was thinking about this, your question today about this. I thought, we certainly shouldn't build our economy in Clayton around this. I think it's probably higher importance of, to the community that we look at, you know, more income taxing, producing jobs, more housing, you know, you know, opportunities for people to live. And, and this is kind of a subset of it. That's my personal opinion, but I'm glad you asked the question because I think it's, you know, I think, I think we all got the sense you were asking it just from helping us think this through, so, thank you.
I appreciate the question. When, when I first thought about, even when the law was passed throughout the state, I was looking at alcohol and looking at recreational marijuana. And while it's new here for us, it's not for other states. And some of the other states that I looked at, they still, their numbers were still much higher with accidents, issues, problems, social issues around alcohol, not recreation marijuana. I'm not an expert, I do not know. So, when I think about that, I think about, we actually sell alcohol out of Kroger's, which was, I know, a shock for me because it used to be you had to go to like a special store, I think. And then, all of a sudden, you can get hard liquor at the grocery store. And, and so, I remember being very surprised at that. But I haven't heard of anything in terms of there being an outcry about that or that that caused increased problems. I don't know. I don't think, when we're looking at this, we're certainly not talking about a level at which we would be building our economy around recreational marijuana. I mean, the numbers that we're talking about are singular numbers and it's small, so I don't think that's going to happen. But when I think about people that are passing through the area, they stop at Kroger's, you know, to pick up liquor. And they may live south of town, but they work north of town, and they stop here. So, I'm not sure that we, that our decision here would be making Clayton a destination site for recreational marijuana. I, you know, with the numbers, the singular numbers that we're talking about.
Yeah, I, too, am thankful that you asked that question because that was, when we first talked last month, that was really my concern about the, you know, the safety issue. Because I wrote on my note, enforcement. So, if we have dispensaries, it's already laws in place that you can't smoke in public places or, you know, different things like that. And I'm thinking, that's exactly where my mind went, just people walking around the streets, just doing whatever, you know? And that is certainly something that I do not want to see here in Clayton. You know, that, but how do you enforce these things? And I guess, through the laws that are currently in place already for enforcement. So, I appreciate your question also because I want to make sure that we do stay safe and that Clayton doesn't become the city of weed, you know? This is where you go to, you know? So, I, this, this is really kind of, I'm trying to make a decision without enforcing my personal beliefs all through my, you know, our decision here. But it does play a role for me. I feel confident the city of Clayton would not be known as a destination for weed.
So, what's our- Pleasure here, are we interested in tabling this?
I'll throw this out for, for the good of the order, and we'll see if it, if it, if it gets concurrent grade. If not, then, then we have time. I think we do have all time, too, right, Ellen? We still have time?
Okay.
Great, okay. If, I'll throw, I'll make a motion to say that the city could allow two dispensaries and four other- and four other users, which would equal.
Operators.
Thank you. Operators, operators, operators. Which would, I think, if we, if we put the, the number on the dispensary, at least to Martina's point, it would, it would give direction to the council about, you know, a number for that. And then they could decide the other four.
So you, you're saying two dispensaries and then four other operators? And by operators, are you meaning only cultivators and processors with those four? Okay. And then I guess the other thing would be, are you saying that you would recommend those six to only be located in the same zoning districts as cultivation, processing, and dispensaries are allowed with medical marijuana?
I need a little help on that part of the motion, by the way. What, what would your, what would your sense be with that?
I would say it makes most sense to me personally to equate them in the same zoning districts as medical marijuana are in. Ellen, I would assume you would concur with that, but just make sure.
Yes, I would. I think the districts that it's currently permitted for medical marijuana are likely going to be the ones that are permitted for adult-use cannabis.
All right, then I would ma, I'll make the motion of, make the motion to the planning commission, recommend to city council, two dispensaries, four other operators at the city's discretion, married up to the existing medical marijuana, finish it for me.
Medical marijuana zoning districts?
Thank you, that's it, yep.
And then do you, do you want to make a recommendation on permitted or conditional?
So I would just say, I, go ahead.
My preference would be that it's permitted at this point. I, I'm not sure that we really need to do conditional considering what is already in place.
So the recommendation will be to recommend to a council to allow two dispensaries and four other operators, meaning cultivators or processors, in the same zoning districts as medical marijuana is currently permitted and to recommend those six to be as permitted uses, not conditional uses.
I would make that motion.
And, and that we would allow, and you had mentioned this before, Martina, that we would allow the applications to come in and they would be approved based upon first in. Yes.
Do that with everything, isn't it?
Yeah, it's by the time that they apply, so first applied. And then we work with that applicant. So if there is a setback or if they need more information, we still consider them first applied.
And then Ellen, would you draft up a resolution with this recommendation? Is that how you typically do it, is drafted up in the form of a resolution?
I believe so. So I included a resolution, it's kind of a blank one in here for you. And so we can do modifications to that as well and only include the parts that you're recommending here to city council.
And then, because I don't come to these planning commission meetings ever, do you bring that resolution back to them for a vote? Or do they vote on it tonight and then it goes, okay, that's how?
Yeah, that's their vote as tonight is the resolution.
So if it's not coming in as a conditional use, then we won't see it again. Zoning won't see it again.
Zoning will see it again. So when they come in for a, on operator's license or if they come in as a new business to the city, they register with the city and receive zoning approval. And that's when I look at the sort of use compared to the zoning district. And then if there's any sort of special provisions in there, that's when we evaluate those things from a zoning aspect.
So it'll be a staff review?
Correct.
Not a zoning board?
Correct.
And then it doesn't come back in front of us?
Correct.
And I'm not sure if, if this, that this would need to be written in the language, but it would, I think, be helpful to know, say, in six months or in eight months, you know, what the status is, you know, what is occurring in terms of the applications, the number of dispensaries? Did we, you know, actually meet that number of two dispensaries? Or we just still have the one? Because it looks like the one medical marijuana facility may actually apply for recreational. And then if we do have any cultivators or processors, I don't know if maybe that could be put on the calendar that we receive an update? I'm not sure how this body feels about that.
I think it would be helpful to know that, but given, is the current moratorium on dispensaries?
The current moratorium is for adult-use cannabis. So it's all of the operators rather than each one.
So until September 2025, we may not see anything?
Correct. And if there is no language in there about, you know, lifting the moratorium at that time, it sounds like it will be though, so whenever.
So I mean, if council decides to, let's say they say, okay, we're going to go along with your recommendation, they would have me and Ellen work together on the zoning code to make the language changes. That would go before council for two readings. And then they could have that, let's hypothetically say, again, they adopt it the first of July. Then at the same time, simultaneously, they would end that moratorium early. Reason, initial reason for the moratorium was to review the rules from the state. And then that took longer than we thought, so they extended it. And then at some point, they decided, okay, let's give this to the planning commission and give them plenty of time to look at it so they can make a recommendation to us. So that's why I had it until September of last year.
But I believe there's already a motion on the table. Could somebody read that back?
Right. Innocent entirety.
The motion from Mr. Foley was to allow, recommend to council to allow two adult-use cannabis dispensaries within the city and four other operators, meaning cultivators and processors, in the same zoning districts as medical marijuana is currently allowed for those facilities. And to recommend that those adult-use cannabis operators be a permitted use and to process this on a first-applied basis.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I second.
Any further questions from the board? All right, please call the roll.
Mr. Bills?
No.
Mr. Foley?
Aye.
Ms. Pritchett?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
So is there any other business for the board?
Nope, just a reminder that we have a meeting on December 16th for that planning commission 24-04.
So have a motion to adjourn?
I, I motion to adjourn.
I second.
All right, meeting adjourned.